Okay, seeing that it's the area of 7 o'clock, we'll open the meeting. Tonight's meeting. Let's see, let's go through our mail first. We've got a couple, yeah, let's just go right to the formal discussion. We get a variety, and that is 7:05. 7:05, informal discussion with Ronald and Sherri McLeod, 109 Home Street, a variance for an addition. Hi.
Hi.
I'm Sherri.
I'm Sherri, yes. Ronald is my dad. He actually had the house built in '72 at 109 Home Street.
Where are we on 109? Where is 109?
Oh, so I'm the daycare, I'm the house. Three houses before the Lindy's supermarket from 106.
On the same side?
On the opposite side. So you go by the water, and then we're 109, we're in natural.
The playground is?
Before the playground. So we're the third house before the court, the basketball court.
Okay.
On that side.
All right.
So they built it in '72 and raised three kids. In 2003, I came home with my son and we asked to build an in-law, which we did, I came with zoning board. And it was a tough sell because at the time, they were worried about, you know, making apartments and selling houses and stuff. But we've been in the property since '72.
Did you have to get a variance or just?
We did not, nope, we did not get a variance at that time. We had to get a special permit for the in-law.
Right, yep.
And so we built the in-law, my parents lived there. Sadly, my mom passed away about a year and a half later, but I was able to take care of having the in-law, so that was perfect. And we've been living there ever since. I have two more children, having never met Mr. Right, I decided I wanted a family anyway. So I'm a single mom with three kids, per my own choice. And I needed a second income to raise them. So in addition to nursing, four nights a week, I opened a daycare. It's very successful, thank goodness, because I'm able to afford three children and work two full-time jobs, but it has consumed my house essentially. There's nothing left in the house for my kids.
Is your dad still with you?
He's still there, and we're doing great. Helps me out with all the sports, you know? So in my house, and I brought pictures of it, it's just daycare everywhere. It's a front-to-back split, so our bedrooms are like 9 by 8, 8 by 10 and 10 by 12. We have the three little bedrooms, the rest of the house is consumed with cribs and swings and the whole nine yards. So I've been feeling frustrated in my own house, working two full-time jobs, having nothing left for me and my kids. I thought, I wanted to build an addition. We can't go off his side where his house is.
His who?
My dad's in-law side is on one side, comes close to the yard property. There's 40 feet on the other side. And I wanted to do a 25-foot addition. A family room for my family, not for the daycare. A mudroom for all of my children's sports bags and athletic stuff, because there's no closet space in the house. A bathroom and a room above it for my children. Like a playroom or a kid's cave instead of a man's cave, if you would. And I can show you pictures of the house. I had Webby come out with $600 and survey the land again. And I thought, before I pay an architect, which is really why I scheduled this meeting, if this is something that would never be considered, I don't want to spend all the money on an architect because I'm asking to go up 25 feet and I only have 40 feet to the neighbor. I can't go off the back because I would need.
So you're looking for a variance from 30 to 15?
Yes, for the side setback. Because if I went off the back, someone pointed out to me, they're like, whoa, you go off the back, but I need solely square feet per child on a main road. So it's a fenced area of yard. So I would lose the yard for the kids and I would lose the business, which I couldn't afford to do the addition without the business. And if we went up, we have solar. And I don't even know if I could afford to go up and move the solar. We're talking about a whole nother ballgame. And I would still want the mudroom, most importantly, off the side with the bathroom. So I'd be looking to go out and up, and I don't know that I could do that. So I'll show you. This is just for.
But you're going, Sherri, you're going, mind if I call you Sherri?
Absolutely.
You're going out and up with the proposed addition for the kid's cave, so to speak?
Yes, for the family room on the first level, the bathroom, the mudroom. And then above it would be one big room for my kids. So I have two 10-year-olds and a 17-year-old. When they get home from school with the daycare going, they can't watch TV, they can't play their Xbox, because I have little ones and they're older and they're playing the games that you can't let little kids see and so forth. So it will be a place for them to go up, get away from the daycare, you know, have room for themselves. Is why I want the addition. Not for the daycare.
How many kids in the daycare?
Up to 10 on any given day, and we have just about 10. I should have brought my daycare sheets for you. I have 10 almost on any given day. My kids don't count now that they're 10 towards the daycare. They used to count in the summer. Now because they're 10, I can have 10 in addition to my own two kids. They can have friends over if I'm at 10. Their friends would count towards my daycare.
Do you have employees?
Oh, I do, I have four employees.
Four employees.
Are you a state licensed?
I'm a state licensed, on the up and up. I've been open since 2009. I had no idea it would take off so well. And my kids are expensive, they play multiple sports and things like that. And as I said, there's no father or no child support for any of them because I wanted kids and didn't have a husband and just had them myself. So that's where the daycare came in. And it's doing well, but again, there's like nothing left in the house. I can show you the pictures, but this is... Now, I have trouble reading these, so it'll take me a minute to find it. But I think... Let's see, so if you... So this, I think, is my... This was the original addition. This is the main house, and this is where I'd like to go. And this is the neighbor.
This is, where's the in-law?
Right here. This is the... this area. And this is the main house. So this would be the... And this would be the... where the variance would come in. And I would go to the architect and bring you everything that you needed if it was a possibility to pass. I just didn't want to pay the money if you guys knew ahead of time this is never going to work. So this is just an example. Like this is my living room. Would normally be the room where you would spend with your family. I have cribs, four cribs, a swing, toys, activity seats for babies. This is the cellar, it's all toddler, nothing for my own kids, all toddler stuff. There's just cribs everywhere. And in the kitchen, I do put the little high chairs away at the end of the night if I'm home where my babysitters do, but the rest of the stuff stays up 24/7. For my Christmas Eve party, I put it all away once a year and I get my dining back. My dining room table is 10 boxes of wipes in a whole changing area to change the kids. Like it's no longer a dining room table, except on Christmas Eve. Don't tell my guests we changed diapers on it. So this is my kitchen. We set up a table and four chairs. I do pack that away at night, and we set up chairs on every stool. So I'm just hoping for a spot. I wanted to do the addition for me and the kids to have a place of our own and not change anything in the existing house. I would like the daycare to be able to use the bathroom because it'll be easier than going over a gate up six stairs and down the hall. We only have one bathroom in the house, on my side of the house. Our cellar bathroom, we've replaced it three times, a flush-up system, but it just keeps breaking and it's not affordable to keep replacing.
Where is the septic system?
Yeah, the leaching. I would have been here a few years ago. I thought the leaching field was here. So I've been being smothered by this for a couple of years. And I thought my dream was gone because I thought this was the leaching field. But then I found out it was up here.
Where's to the left of the house?
When you're looking at it to the left, where I want the addition, there's a neighbor to the left. There's a fence, actually, I have a white solid, like a vinyl fence, and I think it's 30 feet. So I wouldn't be going beyond the fence. The fence would have to come down because the fence is literally like smack in the middle right here.
Oh, going across this way?
Towards the neighbor. I have three, 10, I believe, 10-foot sections of fence. And then it goes chain link back, and that's how the kids play in the backyard. Because we're on the main road, it has to be fenced in.
Do you have any yard behind the back of the chain link fence?
It's wetlands, and I can tell you like my swing set is at the very corner of the chain link fence. And when it rains, it does get damp down there. So I think if we were to move the chain link fence and to create more yard, I think it would be wet a good portion of the time. But we do own land. We would just have to tip down three.
Well, the wetlands goes beyond the pool, all right? This is the line for the.
So our fence.
Edge of wetland.
Yeah, wetlands and backyard. Our fence is probably, it's probably from this pool, maybe six or eight feet, and the chain fence is there.
Goes back this way?
Yes, right, straight across the yard.
And then you have another one going this way.
Right, the vinyl here. This is chain link, the whole backyard is chain link. We have a fence though that divides the yard in two because of the dogs. So I have dogs, but all three dogs go on my dad's side of the yard and pee and poop over there. Unfortunately, this has happened, so there's no pee and poop in the daycare. So the yard is split in two.
So there's no fence here?
No, there is, there's still a fence because we have the animals as well. So there's a fence. So we have vinyl off of this side and vinyl off of this side, and then chain link back and to connect. The vinyls look pretty just in the front, and then it's all chain link. And then we have a stockade wooden fence I had my father put up when we did the daycare to keep the kids away from the animals and the pee and the poop.
Where are you at with your square footage outside for play area?
So that I don't go off the top of my head. I need a certain per kid. And so the yard because of the pool and because we fenced off the pool and the dogs. So the access to the pool is here on my dad's side. And we put a fence right from my back door, essentially there's a fence. And it goes from here to the back, so it's like having two separate yards. So the pool, entrance to the pool, and the dogs are on my dad's side. And the kids are on my side, there's a swing set. I've never measured the yard to know the square footage. But I know we have 10 kids in the daycare most days.
What do you guys feel?
My thought was, we were just talking about it, if she only came over 15 feet and moved back, so it kind of came behind the house a little bit.
I'm having.
You know what I'm saying, then she could do 30 foot.
You could do the 30 foot and.
But that's going to run her over on her play area, so we kind of need to know.
Yeah, you're still talking. You know, quite a bit of... Even if you didn't include the whole backyard, even with the edge where it's marked off as your wetlands, as your vegetation, right on the pool.
Yeah. Yes.
Well, yeah, right there. You could still modify the fence and whatnot without making it a non-conforming lot.
We just split.
There's so many feet away from the waterline, right?
50 with a variance.
50 foot, 50 foot from the waterline.
With those. Variance.
For the structure.
Right. Yeah. Fences are structure. To the program.
Who's on this side with you?
So it's not a family named McLeod, which is no relation to us. And I don't know them well, it's an elderly couple. They're nice, I don't think they would have a problem with it, but I didn't know, I didn't approach anybody or do anything till I saw you guys. They moved in, I don't know, the McAllens lived there for many, many years. And when they moved out, they sold to this family. We've never had any problems with them.
Who will appeal to this?
The other side, the town owns. So there is a family living there, it's sex change housing that the town owns. I don't know, I know the family. I don't know who has a say when the town owns it about an addition. And the people across the street.
How close are they to the waterline on this side?
See, this is $600, and I'm not glad I'm owning anybody, but I don't think.
I just mean approximate. I mean, is the house right next to your property?
Oh, their house.
Or is it over the water?
I would say if... I would say their house might be over a little bit. It's a little ranch. The Barlones were the original owners of it. And like I said, the state bought it from them. So I would say they're over a little bit, but not a lot. I mean, so if this is the end of our house and this is what we have to.
It's the same house.
I don't even remember, is that awful? It used to be navy blue. So when you come around the corner.
Yeah.
You know the big white old house, the Campbell's old mat there, the neighbors across the street?
Yeah.
We're right across the street from them, and it's the little ranch before.
It's not the one where the tree filled down, the garage?
No, that house has no garage. I think that's one or two, two over maybe. There's that guy that has all that stuff in front of me, it's the wooden.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
He's two people away from me. He's the third house from me. But the Campbells, we've known for years. I don't think they would have a problem with it either. I don't think the McLeod's would. And I don't know if the people on this side have a say or if it's the town that has the say. I forgot I was on camera. I should have stayed back here.
Where are you then? Where are you thinking?
She's going to push it back a little?
You said what?
Push it back.
Yeah, don't give her 10 feet. If you look at a 10-foot addition over here, there's not much you can do for space on 10 feet.
That's why I was hoping for 25, for the hallway and the bathroom, and then still get a good-sized living room.
Are you planning on putting a full foundation in there?
No, but I'm not a builder either. If we can go without a foundation, that's the room I want to go. I don't know what a builder would say.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because you talked about, instead of going to two floors in the existing house, the expense. So a foundation is offensive.
Right.
So.
I don't know how you're going to put a mudroom up on the second floor with.
Yeah, put a footing.
Yeah, wood.
Right.
Maybe it would require.
But what I'm getting is if you're just going to put a mudroom over here, you maybe could keep the 30 feet and the rest of it above. I know it's not.
It's a front-to-back.
I know it's not ideal, but.
I wouldn't know how, I mean, someone could help me, but I wouldn't know how to go around back if I have the space because it's a front-to-back split, so the back is the cellar. If that makes sense? So off the side, I would be putting on a mudroom and a bathroom and a washer dryer and a family room off the main floor of my house, right? But when you wrap around to the back, when you walk out the back, that's the cellar. It's a front-to-back split. So, I mean, I don't know, I wouldn't know how to design it or do it or what it would look like. And would I still be able to go up and get a room for the kids above it? To, you know, play and hang out and have space for their friends and their age.
I don't know, I think you're going to have a tough time with the hardship. Because like they, you know, they've said. I personally, I only have one vote, but I personally think that, you know, you could put the addition on, get what you want with the existing layout of the lot without having to do the variance.
By putting it in the back?
Or starting from the side, the mudroom, yeah, and then going off the back. I don't know.
I see a problem, you have solar on the roof right now. They're looking at the cost to raise the solar to the new roof. Even if you put a dormer on the front-to-back split to give you attic space for room, you still would have to relocate the solar.
Exactly. We're losing money on the solar now, but that's another whole story in itself.
So you don't own the solar, you're just.
We do, we mortgage it. Why I say we're losing money on it is, they send us $171 a month for Asprex, but our mortgage is 357. So essentially, we have to save 200 a month in electric bills and we're not even touching that, maybe one or two months in the summer. So we essentially have put out our own money into the solar to pay the mortgage. So what they're sending us doesn't, and what we're saving on it doesn't pay for it. So it'll be costly, I think, to move it since we're losing money monthly on it. I don't know if that changes how much it makes too if it's a different roof and a different allocation.
No, it won't make a difference as far as that.
No.
Would you get far, yeah?
What do you think, Rob?
A hardship. You have other options, but I'm going for a variance.
So if I measure the backyard and the square footage per child and it isn't there, would that be considered a hardship or no?
No.
It's self-created.
It is self-created. Now, let me ask you this, on the in-law or off the back with the front-to-back split, how's that roof working? Your dad's in-law.
So roof, meaning how's it working?
You said, you know, you put the addition on the back of this and you have a front-to-back split.
No, my existing original house was a front-to-back split, like a three-bedroom, original Henry, built in the '70s here. My dad's is more like a ranch style off the back, so.
So this whole part here is a ranch?
It, well, it's like that, and this is the common room, which is a little.
Okay, so the roof goes this way.
So the roof here goes like this. He has solar too, so my roof, I should have brought a picture of it. My roof, if you would, is like front-to-back like this, right? His addition roof is like this. And he's got solar off of his back and I've got solar off of my back. So neither one of us, well, I mean, his roof is like side to side. He's got solar here.
So right here on your, on your part?
On my part, um, here.
Okay, you're here, right?
Yeah.
So his part goes out this way?
This way. Because we had an addition.
Oh, is that the end of the house?
Yeah, well, we had a little family room addition to begin with, and his house went off, his side went off the back of that. So here's my existing house, and then there's a little family room here, and his portion goes off the back this way. And he has solar on that side, facing the neighbor that the town owns. My solar is facing the backyard.
Is it possible to come in directly off the back of the house and mention this, the play area? You have to meet the pool, the pools aren't that expensive for me.
Well, we have a deck on it, so that would be a problem. We have a deck here, a good-sized deck. This is a hill which, if they built on it, they were going to have to fix it. So I guess we'd have to do something to degrade it out so it was flat. I'm just trying to picture how it'd go off the back where it's the cellar. I don't, I can't envision it now because of what the house is. I can envision it off the side because that's the main flow of the house.
Anything's doable, it's just the expense, but to keep it conforming. Just throwing all ideas.
I understand. And that's why I came for this before doing any architect.
I know most of the variances, what, no, when we have a limited, a non-conforming lot, basically size-wise, you know, some of the lots in town are.
Right.
5,000, 10,000, 15,000 square feet that we're giving the variances. You're sitting on, almost pretty close to an acre, well over an acre. Even though, you know, the wetlands does interfere with it back that way. I don't know, Sherri, I think you're going to have a tough time with the hardship.
Okay.
My own personal feeling, you know, here with the other.
Just out of curiosity, if we were a non-conforming lot, like if we were made a non-conforming lot, two, three, would this have been easier to pass because I'm already non-conforming or?
You'd still have to show a hardship.
Okay.
You know?
I mean, we're not anyway, I was just curious. Because I tried to read like minutes to see like what passes and what doesn't pass and see if I had a shot. And it seemed like the non-conforming lots, I didn't know if that just would have been in my favor.
Well, it's easier to show a hardship with a non-conforming lot than when, than you have 150 feet and over an acre.
Okay.
You know, that is easier. I would, could generally say that, to show a hardship on it.
What's the distance on your back of your house for the pool?
Again, I'm not good with distance, I can tell you if I walked in. I go out my salad door and my dad.
Put your shadows in the background?
Yeah, this is what, this is why I can't envision. So when I go out the salad door here, my dad has a deck, that's probably what that is, like a, but a two-story deck, like up ahead. And this is where we drew the fence. So this pool's a little bit off, I think the pool's really a little bit over. So when we come out here, there's a six-foot stockade fence to do the dogs in the pool gate, okay? I would say there's 20, maybe 25 feet from the house to the pool.
Here they are.
From here to the pool.
It's a walkout basement.
Yeah, the walkout basement.
But it's.
See, so it's the cellar that's in the back. That's why I'm trying to picture how I would... The cellar is the daycare, is part of the daycare, right? It's the big playground.
Yeah, but you have, don't you have to come upstairs a few steps of stairs to get up?
Just six years, exactly.
Yeah, it's not a walkout, it's not a level walkout, is it, in front of the back?
Well, it is, so when you walk into my home, if you walked into the front door, there would be six stairs up to three tiny bedrooms because it's the back half of the house because it's a front-to-back split. And I have this living room, dining room.
Yeah.
And then you can go six years down to the cellar, okay? And that's the back of the house as well, which is.
I know, go up to the back, yeah.
It's a walkout. You don't walk down, you walk down.
You don't walk stairs, you don't go upstairs some years.
You go down the original six stairs and there's a nice big room.
Yeah, no, I lived in a front-to-back, so.
The front half of the basement is across.
Exactly. That's why the rooms, the whole house is small because you're only utilizing half the house on any level.
Essentially, you have half a basement, yeah.
Right, and on any level of my house, it's only half a house. You know what I mean? So the rooms are all small, that's why the bedrooms are so small. It's the back half of the house. Because you're only going up and down six stairs.
Yeah, but what I think makes that nice coming off the back of the house is you have two stories exposed already.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying? So you could extend that basement this way and then walk out, you know, so if, you know, I want to write on it, but you know, if you had it here, now your walkout would be here, let's say. You know what I mean?
So this is a two-story deck, it has, it's, when you walk out my door, my father's two-story deck is literally, I mean, it's quote, quote, because they built it, but you walk out and you have your little cement walkway. My dad's two-story deck is like right here when you walk out the door.
There would be changes no matter what you do. But to try to make it work, you know, that actually might be a good thing than it is that way, you know?
I'm just, I know if I can't do it the other way, I have to conform to something else. I just don't know about the kids' play space. Like I couldn't do any of this without the daycare, it's a huge part of my income.
Sure.
And you need to put a playground, put a daycare on this side. You'll have all this here, you know, extend this back this way. You know, you'll have to eliminate the deck.
My dad's deck.
Or put it off the back.
Yeah.
Well, this, these are back, this is the bedroom. This is the living room that he walks out into with like this, a slider, and this deck's right there. It's probably like a six foot. So his, he has a full basement in that side.
The deck where he walks out here is on the second floor.
So that's really the first floor. I know it sounds weird, but it's, you walk in his house, it's for one floor with a basement.
Right.
And so the deck is off, it's like you walk in and he's in the kitchen, you go into the living room and there's a slider and there's the deck. So his is the first floor and mine is the cellar.
So you won't have a hardship and you'll be able to do, you know, the pool, is it in ground or above?
It's above. It just sounds expensive, more to move a pool and a deck and make a whole playground and still do the addition. I know that's cheaper than doing the addition, but, and still do the addition. But I understand, if this is something you don't foresee going, I don't want to spend, I don't want to spend money on the architect to do it. I'll have to try and figure something else out.
You need to eliminate how far you have to go back by, you could essentially add 10 feet onto your house this way. Still be within the 30 year, and then just go back less to get the square footage you need.
Oh, of the, into the yard.
You could extend the house almost 10 feet this way.
Right, I would do that. That's where I would get my mudroom. To me, that's a little.
Top and bottom, right, top and bottom, right? You could even make this section full basement, so you have another little 10, 10-foot full basement in there. And then you don't have to come back so far because you have the square footage you need.
Okay.
Which would mitigate some of this here. Of course, you would have to check for conservation and all that.
Your builder should be able to do that.
I still would have to move the pool.
Yeah.
And I still would have to make it. Now, the playground area, how, where can my fence go to the property line? Can that go right onto the property line almost?
I think so, yeah.
Yes. I mean, I see what you're saying and it can be done. Whether I can afford it is a whole nother story to build an addition, move a pool, move a deck, move a playground, would be a lot for me. But it's something to think about.
Yep.
And I wouldn't have to come back to zoning board if I didn't need a variance or I still have to bring some, any plans back if I'm not approaching on any neighbor. Just so I know where I'm going after here.
You'd have to bring the plans to the building inspector.
Okay.
And then he would decide whether if you were non-conforming and or didn't meet the zoning requirement and require you to get a variance, he'd actually technically bottom line give you a letter saying declining your application and then you'll come to us and.
Do I only have 10 feet? I know I only have 10 feet off the back. Do I only have 10 feet off the front or do I have a little more to play with? I don't have last.
You have 30 feet on the side from the lot line.
The closest point, the closest.
Oh, from the closest point, okay. Okay.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't frame ours to.
Right, to not be.
With that angle, you wouldn't do, you wouldn't do that.
Makes sense. Makes sense.
It'd pretty help with a, yeah, it's tough. With a hundred and fifty feet of frontage and sitting over an acre, it's, you're kinda creating your own hardship, I think.
So does anybody know about solar? And how expensive that is to, we have to take down and store it and then put it back up?
That's really what you'd have to do, yeah. Who's the company that did it for you?
Amerige. That's another problem, my dad did that. He had to decide, but he did that, I would never have done it.
Yeah, a lot of times, don't look at your contract, it could very well be spelt in there, sometimes.
I remember him saying something about, like if you had to do your roof, like say you, say a tree hit it, you gotta do a roof again, there's gotta be where you take it down. I just don't know how expensive it is 'cause you have to them probably come out and do it and then come back and put it back up in addition to building. But, okay.
They're still in business?
I don't think so. We had a terrible time with Amerige, I have to tell you. Like we were told, we were getting, right up into the day they cut us the first check, we were told we were gonna get a percentage of whatever we made and we were gonna get bigger checks in the summer, we were gonna get less checks obviously in January, February. And the date we were due for a check, we got a little email saying, oh, they've changed you and put you on budget plan so you're getting a hundred and seventy-one dollars a, a month, doesn't that sound great? But not when we need to save two hundred every single month, does that sound great to me? 'Cause you don't even spend two hundred on your electric bill in January and February, so you're losing money there. So it's been, it was my father's baby and I was against it, but, you know.
You're not.
You, you give, you give a little, you, you give us a little for me, right?
Well, I hope we helped you out a little bit, get an idea.
Okay. Well, save me the money on, on those. I will be back in short, hopefully.
Thank you very much.
I was also surprised when we tried to make it exactly the same plan that gave you two thousand and eight. Nothing has changed. So, all right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. All right, let's move on to Mayo's correspondence. Uh, four-nine letter from, uh, Brooks and Renss, formerly Deutsch Williams. Status update regarding Gordon Andrews versus the Zoning Board of Appeals, building inspector of the third party. Do you guys have copies of this? Uh, please consider the following to be a status update in reference to the above entitled action. As you may recall, after a case management conference on October eleventh, two thousand seventeen, the court ordered the plaintiff to file a motion of summary judgment for all of his claims on or before November seventeenth, two thousand seventeen. After he missed that deadline, the court allowed his motion for an extension of time to file those pleadings. After those pleadings were filed, we filed in opposition to the plaintiff's motion along with the request for deposition on behalf of the zoning of the Board of Appeals and the building inspector, copies of which previously forwarded to you for your files. The plaintiff then, without leave of court, filed a revised motion for summary judgment, a revised Land Court Rule Four, statement of undisputed facts along with a revised appendix and memorandum of law. We filed a motion to strike those improper pleadings. Then the court ordered the plaintiff to address the motion to strike with a deadline that expired without any opposition being filed. Subsequently, we received correspondence from the plaintiff's counsel office indicating that his counsel was ill and requesting additional time from the court to address that motion along with certain filings that the court ordered that we submit referring to an earlier zoning application on his petition eight twenty-three along with the plan submitted for the same. In response to that request, the court ordered the plaintiff to submit additional information on his counsel's alleged illness. Instead of doing that, the plaintiff has secured new counsel. That counsel who is new to this dispute saw additional time to respond to the motion to strike and the petition eight twenty-three filings made. That request was granted and the plaintiff's new counsel has until April thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, to prepare and file those oppositions if any. Once you are in receipt of those files, we expect that the court will schedule oral argument on the disposition motion, our opposition and our request for dis- disposition along with that of the co-defendant. Once we are appraised of that date, we will inform you in the interim. Should you have any questions you've got in the foregoing, please do not hesitate to contact me, Kibbely M. Salon. So that was the new, the request was granted and the plaintiff's new counsel has until April thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, to prepare and file those oppositions. Doesn't that kinda date come and go or is it just me?
Yeah, it is.
Okay, could be interesting. April eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, decision letter from the planning board, petition eight seventy-six, Joseph and Linda McCarthy, sixteen Thompson Street, special permit. At a meeting held on Thursday, April twelfth, two thousand eighteen, this is regarding petition eight seventy-six from the planning board to the McCarthys. Voted to grant your petition eight seventy-six for a special permit for a six-point-oh-two-acre estate lot with fifty feet of frontage located on Thompson Street, map one sixteen lot one to be known as sixteen Thompson Street, which meets all the requirements of section one sixty-seven sixteen of the Halifax zoning bylaws. Motion by Amelius, seconded by so-called in favor, motion passes five zero zero. Decision shall not take effect. So, boom, there you go. Uh, four eighteen eight, four eighteen, two thousand eighteen, letter from the planning board, Halifax Solar, Zero River Street Certificate of Approval. To the Halifax Solar LLC, Essex Capital Plant Partners, Buxford, Mass. Dear Mr. Grant, attaches the copy of the certificate of approval for the site plan for the solar array to be located at Zero River Street, Halifax, Mass., lot one seventeen, map one seventeen lot one. So it was granted. In addition, a sample of tree planting to be located in at the front of the property along River Street and a letter of assurance for reasonable use of the site according to the following criteria was submitted to the board at the April twelfth, two thousand eighteen meeting. Copies attached, the board accepted both items and will be part of the permanent record as discussed. There you go. April twentieth, two thousand eighteen, letter from Brooks and Renss with two new filings regarding Gordon Andrews versus the Zoning Board of Appeals, Building Inspector, the Party Trust, Land Court, Civil Action Number One, seven M I S C zero 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 five oh seven. Attention Clerk's Office, Land Court, Austin, Mass. Regarding Gordon Andrews versus the Zoning Board. Dear sir or madam, closed hearing for filings in reference to the above. This is dated April twentieth. And the deadline was by April thirteenth, I believe, whatever. In closed hearing filings in reference to the above titled action, please find the following. The town of Halifax, zoning board of appeals, and the town's building inspector, motion for leave to file a reply to the plaintiff's opposition to the municipal defendant's motion to strike and the municipal defendant's request for oral argument. Thank you for your attention in this matter, Kibbely Salon. So they just file, I guess. That's here for your review if you'd like to read that. Okay. April twenty-fourth, memo from the Board of Selectmen, public hearing for Anne Marie Reed, long-term trailer permit, thirty-one Oak Place. The Halifax Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing April twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen, eight P M. In the selectmen's meeting room, four ninety-nine Plymouth Street, to consider an application by Anne Marie for a long, Anne Marie Reed for a long-term trailer permit residing use on property located at thirty-one Oak Place. There you go. Old Pauline Planning Council's agenda is here also if you'd like to read it. Bills payable, old, any other business, other business. What would you like to discuss, my friend?
I went to the special planning board meeting. Day again, last Wednesday, I think it was.
Thursday.
Last Thursday.
For the zoning?
Different zoning bylaws.
Yeah.
Um, they voted to approve, not to approve, but to recommend that town meeting, certain bylaws. And the one I'm concerned with, with is the entertainment um, special permit bylaw. I'm concerned that the long-term um, effects of this. Right now, it's for two days. And there's nothing saying that later on, it's go to four days, or to six days. They'd have to go back to town meeting, change the bylaw, but. So my concern for the board is if this does pass, that puts a lot of, you know, comes, it comes to, it was last year they were having the selectmen be the granting authority. Now it goes to the zoning board to be the granting authority. So I'm just concerned for the residents of the, of the town, especially on the, the east end of town, um, what this means for them. I've talked to a lot of people and just, if this does pass, I just want the board to be aware that, you know, this could potentially be a foot in the door to a bigger, a bigger, I think it's gonna change the complexion of the town. Is what I think long-term is what's gonna happen. And so I just wanted to give a heads up that, you know, um, the planning boards for it. I don't know what individuals here feel about it, but I was just concerned with, um, they, last year they had a very big meeting where almost all the people at the meeting were against the previous bylaw, which has changed a lot, they put a lot more restrictions on it. Um, my view is that they should let the process play out because if it's allowed by the courts, then people have voted away some of their property rights for no reason. And I just don't, I think the process was in place that we've, we've kinda, it's kinda been circumvented at this point. And I just have concerns long-term and that this board's gonna have a lot of say in what neighborhood's gonna be like. And so just something to throw out there. I'm, I'm very concerned if this passes, what it's gonna do to the town long-term.
Did you say during the meeting too, they, they, they want to, uh, accept, uh, nominated people to, to be a part of the board?
Well, there was an issue about why, and I don't, I don't think it was in, I don't think it was in, uh, relation to that, um, bylaw, but there was some arguments about why there wasn't a, uh, bylaw review board. And Charlie had said he had sent out an email, but nobody had responded from the planning board or the zoning board of appeals about who might want to be on, um, the bylaw review board. I, I do, I will, so we can submit my name if anybody else, you know, if you wanna ask if anybody else wants to be on this board. But he, he did ask, um, that, and I think everybody must have got the email. That was actually confusing email, I wasn't sure what he was saying. I actually didn't know, right?
It's the same thing, I called here and said, didn't quite understand.
Well, now I know because he said at the meeting what he was going for and, uh, I certainly would like to be on it. Um, so, um, that was, that was another thing that was brought up.
Is that still a request that's out there or are they pretty much?
I believe that email was recent.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't know if they shut it off or ended it or is it still?
We're just waiting for, for anyone to come forward to be on the board.
Anybody else on the board interested in being a part of it? Would anyone on the board like to nominate Dan and give a vote?
I don't think it's necessarily, I don't think it's necessarily you have to nominate and vote someone on the board. It's voluntary, just like the board of appeals. If you wanna be on the committee, contact the board of selectmen if you're interested.
I would recommend Dan, I have no problem with that at all.
Well, didn't Charlie ask for, he was waiting a letter from the board, so, that's what he said.
Anyone that's consistent.
Oh, I didn't get that.
Yeah, I don't know if it's officially from the board. I think it's whoever is interested can certainly go to, the board is letting it, no problem.
Okay, I.
Oh, the invitation was, was in.
Yeah, I was under the understanding, I, I will, I will.
It's not that we're not, we're nominating a representative from the zoning board of appeals.
Oh, that's how I took it.
I don't think that was the case.
Geez, I did.
If you wanna be on it, you can be on it.
The way he was saying it, that's how we took it, but I will, I'll ask him, I'll follow him.
Yeah, I mean, you certainly just sent him an email and sent him a letter saying I would like to be on this new committee.
Why don't you do that and if, if at some point it does, uh, require or you would like to say that you have this support, I, I have no.
If you wanna make a motion and make a nomination today just in case.
You'd have my support. How about you guys? Sure. You guys agree with that? Yeah?
I got one question. Um, do they require planning board members and zoning board members to be on it?
No, that's the thing, it's just as the zoning bylaw review committee,
'cause that's what it sounded like with that.
They would like a member of the zoning board, they would like a member of the planning board that they would also like.
You would have no problem saying that you have the, uh, recommendation from the zoning?
Okay. Very good. Well, come on, anything else?
If you wanna set a plan.
All those here. Okay, if we have anything else, like for the board, I don't know why we have, uh, why do we have this two mail, is this, is there something in, involved in this, Sherri? That we need to look at? Or is it just on the table?
It's just mail.
Oh, okay. Good. All right, anybody else have any more business they'd like to bring up? We don't have any bills to sign off.
Uh, for the minutes?
Oh, that's a good idea, yes. How about, uh, anyone have a chance to review the minutes of Monday, April ninth, two thousand eighteen? I saw one typo on page five of the minutes, it's just a typo, that's all it is. Well, other than that, I didn't, I didn't see any other problems.
Wanna circle that typo?
I did, yes, I did. Oh. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes of, uh, April ninth, two thousand eighteen?
Motion to accept the minutes of Monday, April ninth, two thousand eighteen.
In a second?
Second.
Uh, all those in favor to accept the minutes of April ninth? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pass this, bingo. Okay, how about a motion to adjourn, gentlemen?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
In a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion to adjourn. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.